May I ask colleagues to go on screen, please? Those who are not present in council. And I'll ask the clerk to confirm quorum.
You do have quorum, Your Worship.
And are we aware of any council colleagues who aren't in attendance right now, clerk?
Counselor Van Holst is not in the meeting currently. Ms. Westlake-Power, are you aware of any regrets?
All right, thank you very much. And thank you, and good afternoon, colleagues, and we'd like to welcome the public as well. I'll say that the City of London is committed to making every effort to provide alternate formats and communication supports for council standing or advisory committee meetings and information upon request. To make a request for any city service, please contact accessibility@london.ca or 5196612489, extension two-
I will be leaving the province too.
I think if there's someone with their microphone on, they might think of another option, please. Extension 2425. So, colleagues, with that, I'll look for any disclosures of keen interest. Deputy Mayor.
Yes, on item 4.2 of the SPBC report, which is, I think, item 12 in council's agenda, it relates to appointments to Western University's Board of Governors, and Western University is my employer, so I'll declare an interest on that.
So noted, thank you very much. Any other declarations? Counselor Edinburgh-Bergen.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to declare conflict on 4.4 of the seventh report of the Community and Protective Services Committee, which deals with increased childcare spaces as my wife operates her own daycare.
Thank you, so noted. Any other declarations? Counselor Hummer.
Thank you. On the same item that Deputy Mayor Morgan declared on item number 12 on the report from SPBC, on the same issue, Western is also my employer, and so I'll declare a keen interest on that. And then on the report on short-term accommodation, I've declared a keen interest on that, as I have rented my home on Airbnb in the past, and I expect I would do so again in the future.
Thank you, so noted. Any other declarations? I see no more. Thank you very much. Therefore, now I will call on Counselor Hopkins to offer the land acknowledgement, please.
We acknowledge that we are gathered today on the traditional lands of the Anishnabik, the Haudenosaunee, the Lope-Neg, and the Atawandran peoples. We honor and respect the history, language, and culture of the diverse indigenous people who call this territory home. We acknowledge all the treaties that are specific to this area: the Two-Roe Wampum Belt Treaty of the Haudenosaunee, Confederacy, Silver Covenant Chain, the Beaver Hunting Grounds of the Haudenosaunee, Nanfan Treaty of 1701, the Mackee Treaty of 1790, the London Township Treaty of 1796, the Huron Track Treaty of 1827, and the Anishnabik and the Dish with One Spoon Covenant Wampum of the Anishnabik and the Haudenosaunee. The three indigenous nations that are neighbors to London are the Chipulas of the Thames, First Nations, Oneida Nations of the Thames, and the Manci Delaware Nation, who all continue to live as sovereign nations with individual and unique languages, cultures, and customs.
Thank you very much, colleagues. We now have resumed not just tradition but another important component of these meetings, which is our national anthem. Tonight, our national anthem will be performed by a very talented London artist, Catherine Fisher, who combines melody and grace in her music. Catherine's recent extended play, Wildflower Heart, shows her audiences all the feelings by leading them to the brightest parts of their hearts. From the Via Rail Artist on Board to the Winnipeg Folk Festival, London Major's Games, pre-game performances, and much more across our country, she has performed at over 200 shows since 2018. Please join me in welcoming Catherine Fisher, who will join us as we sing the national anthem. Catherine, if you would come forward, please. And the good news about Catherine joining us shortly is you won't have to hear me do the national anthem, so I'm sure she's coming in very shortly. Ladies and gentlemen, please help me welcome Catherine Fisher. Please come forward. And, colleagues, please stand.
Gotta lower it a little bit. Oh, Canada, our home and native land. True patriot love in all of us command. With glowing hearts we see thee rise, the true North strong and free. From far and wide, oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. God, keep our land glorious and free. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee.[914.37][914.37](applause)
And Catherine, I'm just going to ask you to stay by for a moment. We have a certificate to share with you to acknowledge your time with us today. So with that, let me come around as we present that to you. In fact, we normally have the picture taken by City Hall's banner.
Perfect.
Please do. What a pleasure. Ed, we're nice to see you.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, Catherine Fisher.[948.54][948.54](applause) And it is so important in so many ways, colleagues, that we honor and acknowledge our local talent, and Catherine is another great example of that. I'd now like to call on Counselor Pelosi for recognition, please. Counselor Pelosi.
Thank you, Your Worship. It's a pleasure to rise today to recognize Mr. Lloyd Grove. Lloyd is a resident in London who's 85 years old, so he met the criteria, and he's been acknowledged and recognized as the Senior of the Year for 2022 from the provincial government. He is the only senior this year to receive that acknowledgement. For Lloyd has donated blood for 66 years, and today had made his 1,410th donation. He's donated whole blood, platelets, and mainly blood plasma. As someone who's had a loved one's life saved by a plasma donation on behalf of council and all Londoners, I'd like to thank Lloyd on today, World Blood Donor Day, for his accomplishment in saving so many lives and having such a huge impact in our community. Thank you.
Now I'd like to call on Counselor Lewis, please.
Thank you, Your Worship. Continuing on the trend of London talent that we're recognizing tonight, on May 29th, in an overtime game, and then on June 1st, in a one-point final, the London Lightning became five-time champions of the National Basketball League of Canada. And I want to extend my congratulations to owner Vito Friesa, the coaching staff, and the very, very talented players who call Budweiser Gardens home and who do our city so proud on the court. Now, I am the first one to admit that I am not nearly as knowledgeable about basketball as I might be about, say, hockey or baseball, but I know a dynasty when I see one, and five national championships is a record that the London Lightning players and their families should be extremely proud of, and I know Londoners are extremely proud of, too. And I want to also just thank the Lightning and Mr. Friesa, because they're not just representing our city on the court, but they are such wonderful ambassadors of their sport in the community, visiting with students at our elementary schools. And I will share on a personal note, thanks to a neighborhood decision-making grant from the city and an extra generous donation from Mr. Friesa, students at Princess Anne French Immersion School have a new basketball court in their schoolyard on which they can play. So not only are they showing us their fantastic skills on the court today, but they are fostering the skills of the players of the future who may one day wear that Lightning jersey. So congratulations to all the members of the London Lightning family on their championship.
Thank you.[1156.95][1156.95](applause) I'm not aware of any other recognitions. So with that, I will say that we have no confidential matters that are to be discussed in public. And now it is my intention to move into closed session in a moment. I'll look for a mover and a secondary. But for the benefit of the public, and I'll ask the clerk in a moment to advise why we are going into closed session, but I will say that we will be there for the time it takes. Then we will resume into public session and be pleased to carry on with the balance of our agenda. So before I look for a mover and secondary, clerk, perhaps you could share with the public our rationale for going into closed session, please.
Your Worship, the matters to be dealt with in closed session are two matters that are outlined on the public council agenda. The first item relates to litigation or potential litigation and advice that is subject to solicitor-client privilege. The second item relates to the proposed or pending acquisition of land and communications necessary for that purpose, along with solicitor-client privileged advice and instructions to be applied to any negotiations.
Thank you very much. So with that, I'll look for a mover to go into closed session. Moved by Counselor Hillary, or seconded by Counselor Ed Meyer-Bergen. We will call the question.
Counselor Van Holst? Counselor Van Holst, second call. We will mark you as-
I vote yea.
Thank you. I heard yea. Closing the vote, motion carries, 15 to zero.
We certainly heard something. There was an echo there, Counselor Van Holst. I'll leave that to you to see if you can deal with that feedback at your end. So with that, colleagues, we'll just ask you to bear with us for a moment as we work towards moving into closed session and getting the appropriate people in for the first item. Thank you. Deemed the question called, turn your attention to the screen, please.
Your worship, you do have corner.
Thank you very much. For the benefit of the public, as we've now returned, this is slightly, this is going back to the old way, and the old way means that we will not be reporting out of closed session immediately. That will come in its regular programming. So what we will now do is we will now go to the minutes, and I'll look for someone to move the minutes from the meeting held on May 24, 2022. I see Counselor Van Holst, seconded by Counselor Van Mirbergen. Any discussion? I'll turn your attention to the screen as we vote then.
Counselor Elmer? Closing the vote. Motion carries 15 to 0.
Thank you, colleagues. I'll turn your attention now to items six, communications and petitions, of which there is one item under said area. We have a number of questions, amendments, communications that have come to committee, and I would ask that all of these be referred to the appropriate caps committee stage for consideration with item 15, 4.3. So with that, I will look for a mover and a seconder, please. Moved by Counselor Lewis, seconded by Counselor Hamu. Comments, questions? Let's call the vote.
Closing the vote. Motion carries 14 to 0 with one recuse.
Thank you, colleagues. There are no motions to which notice has been given to our reports, and I'm going to start with the eighth report of Civic Works. I'll call on Counselor Plaza, please.
Thank you, your worship. It's a pleasure to support, to put forward the eighth report of the Civic Works Committee. I have not been given notice to pull anything separately in advance, noting that there was no conflicts declared at committee and everything was unanimous vote.
So then the question becomes, does anyone wish to have any item dealt with separately? I see none. Counselor Plaza, please.
Thank you. I've put items one through five on the floor, noting that item 2.1 for North Cress Drive is a budget increase. This will allow homes already there, if they choose so, to have water servicing as they are within the urban growth boundary. 2.2 was a contract amendment. When staff got out, they realized that there were some other repairs that needed to be done in the same area for pedestrian walkways, so it's efficiencies within the tender that the city will get to realize while work's being done, and closing part of Upper Canada Crossing as it's not needed.
Thank you. Any comments or questions with respect to the Civic Works Committee reports? Counselor Cassidy.
Thank you, your worship. I made sure to put my hand up really high.
Appreciate that.
So you wouldn't miss it. I just want to comment on 2.1. That is in Ward 5, and it's one of the areas that was annexed by the city in the 90s. And as part of the annexation, there are other areas in the Byron area as well, properties that had been on well, water, and on septic systems were left that way, and that was part of the agreement in bringing these lands into the city. We did make a budget, we did make a budget addition in our last multi-year budget to look after these orphaned areas when the opportunity arises. And this is a small area in London where the opportunity has arisen to bring them into the water system so that they no longer have to use their wells to, for drinking water and all of that. But they will, the ones that are on septic, will stay on septic for a while until another opportunity arises. So I just want to say thank you to staff for making this happen. People have been asking about this since I was elected in 2014, and I really didn't hope that anything, even a small area, would see progress like this so soon. So I'm really pleased. I know the people in the area are pleased and will be pleased going forward. So I know Scott Matheres, in particular, did a lot of work to make this happen. I want to thank him through you, your worship, and the whole team there in the Engineering Services Division. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Any other comments with respect to any aspects of the Civic Works Committee? I see none. Maybe call the question, Chair, as we do. Deemed the question called, turn your attention to the screen, please.
Closing the vote. Motion carries 15 to 0.
Thank you. Counselor Plaza?
Thank you. That concisely covers the eighth report.
Very kindly. Now the 11th Report of Planning Environment Committee. I'll call on Counselor Hopkins, please.
Yes, thank you, your worship. I'd like to present the eighth report of, oh, sorry, the 11th Report of the Planning and Environment Committee. I have heard from no one to have anything pulled.
So let's ask that question. Does anyone wish to have an item dealt with separately, independently for vote purposes? Counselor Hopkins, I don't see anyone, so I'll turn it back to you, please.
Thank you, your worship. And as always, Planning and Environment Committee is always a busy committee. We did receive good news and an announcement about the London Plan being in full force and effect. It is now the one and only official plan of the City of London. We had a number of consent items. Of course, seven public participation meetings, always busy. There was a request for an amendment for 3.5 regarding the demolition of 850 High Barry Avenue that was not supported. The amendment was to allow for some photography to be done before the two buildings would come down. The request came from the public at the public participation meeting. We also received the Latch Report, and with that, I, that is my report.
Thanks very much. Any other comments or questions with respect to the items on the agenda? I see Counselor Cassidy, please.
Thank you. Just in response to Counselor Hopkins' report, your worship, I want to say thank you to staff in the planning divisions, legal staff, and counselors who saw the London Plan through to... Plan through to its final, through the final steps, and now it's in full force and effect. It's a groundbreaking plan, and people forget about that because so much time has passed since it was accepted and endorsed by council and endorsed by the ministry at the provincial level. It, if people have never looked at an official plan for a city, I think they should. They should look at the London Plan, and they should look at the 1989 official plan, even just briefly, to see the difference. The London Plan is something that anybody can look at and understand and, and know what it means. And it seeks to build the City of London in a way that works for all the residents. I think it, there was an amazing feat of public engagement that took place in the years that led up to the creation of the London Plan. I want to call out a former city planner, John Fleming, and his team, many of them still with the City of London, many who have moved on to other cities and other places. It was an amazing thing that they did. I'm very proud of it, and I know that they are as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we entertain more comments, I think we've got three items on Planning Environment that are going to be dealt with by virtue of amendment as well. I wonder, Counselor Cassidy, pardon me, Hopkins, if you just want to comment on that, please.
Yes, your worship. My apologies for missing the amendments. We do have three amendments: Clause 3.2, which is 537 Crestwood Drive, and Clause 3.6 for 1503 Hyde Park Road, and Clause 3.7 for 850 Highbury Avenue. They all are technical amendments to be made, and those are the three amendments.
Thanks very much. So we will be dealing with those separately. So, colleagues, with your indulgence, on the table really is one through 15, with the exception of item nine, 13, and 14, I believe that's correct. So we're talking about 3.2, 3.6, 3.7, which we will consider amendments, and if those are, as those are dealt with, then supported as amended, if that's the will of council. So with that, any other questions with regard to those items there, with the exception of 3, 2, 6, and 7? So with that, with those items excluding those three, we will call the question.
Closing the vote, motion carries 15 to zero.
Thank you, and now I'll turn your attention to item 3.2, Counsel-
I'm not sure what the process here is here. Do I read them, the amendments out, or if someone can give me some direction?
Well, let's just ask the clerk.
Through you, your worship. There was a pre-amendment circulated, perhaps a general overview of the item and the bylaw that's associated with it. I believe the first item is related to 520 Sarnia Road, Crestwood Avenue issue, and this is Clause 3.2, 537 Crestwood Drive.
Thank you. This was supported at committee, and I will ask if anyone has any questions with respect to 3.2. This is on the amendment. And you can always go to your screens to clarify the amendment, the item that we're dealing with right this moment. Well, this will be moved by Counselor Hopkins. Is there a secondary for this amendment? I see Counselor Fife Miller. On the amendment.
Closing the vote, motion carries 15 to zero.
And now I will direct your attention to 3.2, now as amended. Counselor Hopkins, are you prepared to move that forward? Yes, thank you. Seconded by Counselor Cassidy. Comments or questions, colleagues? Then let's call the question.
Closing the vote, motion carries 15 to zero.
Second item, colleagues, is item 3.6, where an amendment is, I wonder if I can take a liberty, Chair, to ask the clerk just to make reference to this amendment as well.
This is 1503 Hyde Park Road.
That's correct.
We're doing a technical amendment on this. The rationale is to adjust the reference. It's really the bracket that we're adjusting, and Section 25.3 was referenced and was replaced with Section 25.4.
Thank you. And do you have a secondary? Ms. Counselor Fife Miller, thank you. Any comments or questions on the amendment? Call the question.
Closing the vote, motion carries 15 to zero.
And back to you on, on the, this item as amended, Counselor Hopkins.
One is 3.7, which is 850-
Yeah, before we get, quick, just before we get there, we'll just finish off 3.6 as amended, if we could, if that has your support to put on the floor.
My apologies.
No, we're all good. Seconded by Counselor Lehman. Thank you. Comments, questions? Counselor Moore, Deputy Mayor?
Yes, on the amended motion, this is a development in my ward. I didn't attend the Planning Committee, but I did want to just add a few words of support for this development. It's a eight-story, 130 residential unit development with about 800 square meters of retail and commercial space on the ground. As Counselor Cassidy noted and Counselor Hopkins about the London Plan, this is one of the few areas in the city that has a Main Street designation, and so a development like this is an important addition to what is keeping with the new character and development of the Hyde Park-Gainsborough area, which we've seen a number of new residential developments and are on the verge of creating a very walkable and interactive community village-like feel as we add a number of people into this area. This is certainly a, a development that does have a lot of intensity in the area, and I want to commend the applicants, consultants, who did a lot of work, multiple developer-driven community meetings with the community, which is why you see just a few comments from the public record. A lot of that back and forth happened and was engaged with in the community. So thank you to our staff. Thank you to the developers, consultants, for helping make a smooth process, and I'm certainly supportive of this development in the Hyde Park area.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Clerk, I see no more. Why don't we call the vote?
Closing the vote, motion carries 15 to zero.
The last amendment is for Clause 3.7, which is 850 Highbury Avenue. I wonder if I can just go to the clerk for the rationale behind the amendment.
Clerk, do you want to go ahead?
Through you, your worship. The bylaw title and the first statement were updated to reference the amendment to the official plan. In quote, "purpose of this amendment", quote, the words "to amend" were replaced with "to delete and replace", and in Part D, the amendment, the first line was amended to read, quote, "The official plan of the City of London 2016 is hereby amended as follows", end quote.
Thank you. You'll move that, Counselor Hopkins? Do you have a secondary? I see Counselor Van Mirberg, and thank you. Comments, questions? On the amendment, let's call the question. Sir, Counselor Hillier, I see you with that thoughtful thinker pose, and I'm sometimes wondering if you're putting your hand up to ask a question, or you're looking wise. I think you are, actually.
Closing the vote, motion carries 15 to zero.
Counselor Hopkins.
My thanks to the amendments, and that is my report.
Just have one more part?
We have to amend it, of course.
So you're putting forward the motion as amended. Counselor Hopkins, do you have a secondary for that? I see Counselor Hillier. Thank you very much. And with that, any comments or questions? Let's call, let's call the vote then.
Closing the vote, motion carries 15 to zero.
Counselor Hopkins.
Apologies for being ahead of myself. My thanks to the clerk for his assistance with the amendments, and that is my report.
Thank you. It's why we have such wise clerks, I tend to notice. Thank you very kindly as well. Chair, I'd now like to call on Counselor Cassidy for the Seventh Report of the Community and Protective Services Committee, please.
Thank you, your worship. I put the entire report on the floor except for 4.3, which is number 15 on the council agenda. We have a conflict on that one, and I am not aware of any other items to be pulled.
Does anyone, Counselor Van Mirberg, and you'd like to have something else dealt with separately? Would that be-
I declared a conflict on 4.4.
Got it. Yes?
At the beginning of the meeting, I just want to make sure it's pulled separately.
It will be. Thank you. Any other where a vote is required separately, or wish to have the item dealt with separately?
Mr. Chair, just one sec. I'm just reviewing.
Yep. Go ahead, Counselor Sully. Anyone else while that's being perused? Counselor Helmer?
Want to make sure the short-term accommodations as well?
Yes, that is def, that's all, that's been pulled. Thank you. At the direction of the chair. Counselor Sully?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask the clerk, the last committee meeting, report, we're discussing that one item that I declared pecuniary interest. I think it was the, was the Immigration Partnership, item 2.2, I believe that's the one I declared on. So I think that one, I'm going to have to separate. London and Middlesex Local Immigration Partnership, I believe that was the one I had declared on.
So noted. Thank you very much. That's item 2.2, or broader, item three on the Seventh Report. Any other items, colleagues? So with the exception of those three items, you'll put those on the floor. Counselor Cassidy?
Yes, your worship, and my apologies to Counselor Van Mirberg, and I forgot that.
All right, and any other comments or questions? This is all with the exception of 22, 43, 44. Counselor Turner?
Just really quickly, on 2.5, the amendment agreement with London and St. Fornia for the stewardship of the former Orchestra London Music Library. Happy to see that moving forward. I think we've spoken about this a little bit before, but when the Orchestra London dissolved, the stewardship of this library was a very important aspect to the members of Orchestra London to make sure that it was retained in hands so that any successor organization would be able to have this, this library, which had been accumulated over years, and is actually rather difficult and costly to be able to approve over time. So happy to see this move forward and glad to see that it's on the agenda.
Thank you very much. Any other comments, colleagues? Counselor Cassidy?
Thank you, your worship. I just wanted to comment on the Housing Stability Plan, which is number, I can't remember. There it is, number 2.9 from the committee agenda, and number 12 on the council agenda. If, I certainly invite members of the public who are interested in our housing crisis in London and the homelessness prevention plans that are in place, I invite them to, to look at this report. It shows the progress that staff have made so far. The strategic priorities are especially important to look at that being under housing affordability and range, and under homelessness prevention, the retention and the supports and service coordination in a city for these, for, for housing and homelessness prevention. If you look on number 100, page 174 from the committee agenda, and seeing the number of projects, the affordable housing development projects that have been completed and that are in progress right now, we're making some really good progress in the city. There is so much more to do, and I just wanted to highlight this plan and again say thank you to city staff for all the good work that they do, as well as the community organizations that work with our city staff in this area.
Thank you. Other comments or questions? So Counselor Sully, we're just trying to clarify which of the, which of the specific issues relating to bylaws that may impact your, your declaration of pecuniary interest. I'm going to ask-
Yeah, so it's just like the immigration partnership, sorry, Mr. Chair, immigration partnership, as I'm employed by the federal government, or the Canadian Border Service Agency, deals with immigration. Does that help?
Well, let's see how much wisdom the clerk can take from your comments.
Through you, your worship, to the council, there are two bills, Bill 232 and Bill 233. The first relates to a contribution agreement with Her Majesty, the Queen, and the Rite of Canada, as represented by the Ministry of Immigration, Refugees, and Citizenship Canada, London and Middlesex Local Immigration Partnership. And Bill 233 deals with a bylaw to authorize and approve the purchase of service agreement with WIL Counseling and Training for Employment, London and Middlesex Local Immigration Partnership. Is the pecuniary interest related to one or both?
Thoughts, comments, Counselor Sully?
Yeah, I'll go with both, just as a caution. I think, yeah, for, for the same reason noted previous.
Thank you. So colleagues, we're dealing with all the items here with the exception of 22, 43, 44. Are we good with that, clerk? All right, so with that, I did not see any other comments or questions. It's a bigger room, there's more people, makes me work more. So with all of that, let's call the vote.
Closing the vote, motion carries 15 to zero.
Counselor Cassidy?
Thank you, your worship. I'll put item three, which is 2.2 from the committee agenda, on the floor, and that is the updated bylaws for the Limlet.
I'm not aware that there are any other comments or questions. That was the conflict opportunity. Should anyone wish to make any comments? I see none. We'll call the question.
Closing the vote, motion carries 14 to zero with one recused.
Counselor Cassidy?
Worship, I'll put item 15, which is 4.3 from the committee report, the short-term accommodations proposed amendments, and there is an amendment to that proposed bylaw as well. And the amendment makes the enactment, enactment date of the bylaw October 1, 2022.
Thank you. And are you moving that amendment, Counselor Cassidy?
Yes.
And is there a secondary for that? I see Counselor Pelosi. Thank you. Comments, questions on the amendment? Counselor Lewis?
Thank you, your worship. And just through you, on the amendment, my concern on an October 1 coming into force date is just around potential problems that arise in the fall around homecoming and the, unfortunately, the FOCO event that we have happening in our community and, and how this could potentially lead to that. I'm not sure what the date Western has of, of homecoming this year, but I'm concerned that we might be allowing for bookings over that period that could lead to further concerns from residents. So I'm wondering if we could get some, some response from our staff or others on when when the homecoming is going to fall and how this could affect that.
Well, I believe it's in the third week of September, but Mr. Maythers will give us, I think, a little bit more wisdom and clarity to that.
Through your worship, we would agree that the ideal timing would be September first for, for this to bring, come forward. However, we will need more time to set up the municipal accommodation tax collection process, so that's why we've recommended the October first date.
Counselor Lewis?
Thank you, worship, and I appreciate the staff need time to, to get pieces of this in place. And quite honestly, I was open to supporting a later coming into force date than perhaps you signing the bylaws in your office tomorrow morning, recognizing that hosts may have bookings throughout the summer, that, that they should have a chance to honor, absolutely. I also recognize that the municipal accommodation tax is not a, a quick process to put in place. But I will say that I am uncomfortable with October first because we have seen in years past issues arising from homecoming, and some of these are at long-term rentals as well. These are not, this, the problem is not exclusive to short-term rental accommodations. I want to be really clear about that. But I think we just opened the door to, to more potential issues with that. So respectfully, I, I would like to move an amendment to the amendment that says September first.
Is there, I know we keep saying firsts, and I'm mindful of weekends, so if there's any specificity, which is a word I've learned today, you might, you might consider that.
Actually, I, I think that that's very good advice, your worship, and, and I'll take that. Perhaps we could put the coming into force date on the Tuesday following the Labor Day long weekend, without having my calendar open in front of me. But I, I think that that gets us through the summer long weekends where bookings may already be booked, but also takes into consideration homecoming.
So I'm not sure if we're treating that as a friendly amendment, and I'll look to the, the mover of the original motion to get a sense of, of her perspective. If not, we will look for a, a second to that. At your pleasure, Chair.
So since there wasn't, I don't think, a second yet for October first, I'm happy to let Counselor Lewis move his amendment, and I'm happy to second his amendment as well.
So noted. Go ahead. What is your point of order?
I had seconded the motion. Thank you, and I don't agree that it's friendly.
All right, so with that, we have a, a motion on the floor, an amendment that was moved and seconded, and to be amended by Counselor Lewis, seconded by the mover of the original amendment, if you're following so far. And so with that, I will look to the clerk, but I think we would vote on the, the less friendly amendment that moves it to September the, the Tuesday. Is that September the fourth? You've got to help me, Counselor Lewis.
I believe that's, now that I've had a chance to actually open the calendar, it's September the sixth.
Sixth. You are making us work. Thank you very much. So that is on the floor. Any discussion about the September sixth timeline as put forward by Counselor Lewis, seconded by Counselor Cassidy? Counselor Turner, go ahead.
Thanks, your worship. I think if we're going to be taking a measure like this, then we need to be able to provide as much of a runway as possible. I'm not sharing Counselor Lewis's concerns that this will bleed over into that, that season. But in addition to that, I think the intent is to, to try and be able to put things in place that help to address some of the, the negative and unwanted behaviors associated with the short-term accommodations. Counselor Lewis is correct. It's, this isn't limited to short-term accommodations. It's, it's an issue that occurs in the city in accommodations of whatever type, owned, short-term, long-term. And, and we need to be able to address those things. I don't think this bylaw is going to be a silver bullet that addresses FOCO or anything else. So I, I think we need to be cognizant of, of the impacts that, that we have on hundreds of small business owners in the city, and we, we should be able to give as much runway as possible.
Thanks very much. Any other comments or questions with respect to the state and timeframe? I'll, I'll recognize the deputy mayor.
Yes, so I tend to concur with Counselor Turner as well. I, I heard from our staff that they would be unable to meet an earlier deadline. So I'd like to go back to our staff to ask, adding the municipal accommodation tax is obviously a key portion of the work being done, and can they meet an earlier timeframe of September sixth, or do they need that extra few weeks into October to, to do so?
Let's get wisdom from staff on that. Ms. Barbone, did you, I see you're there. Might you wish to respond?
Yes, thank you. Through your worship, so to be able to implement the municipal accommodation task, there has to be an updated bylaw and a collection mechanism. So in order to do the bylaw, we have to have a public participation meeting to be able to proceed with that next step. There is not sufficient time with the September first implementation to do a public participation meeting and to be able to get the mechanisms in place subsequent to that meeting. So if you were to support the September first date, there will be no municipal accommodation tax that would be able to be implemented for that date, and you would then have to separate the processes, and then that collection would have to come separate to the registering and the licensing as it is being implemented. So there are ramifications to, to doing that, and I just want to be clear that council understands the separation of those two. It does create a bit of a problem.
Deputy Mayor?
Yeah, so I won't support the amendment to the amendment, but I'll support the original amendment. It gives both our staff time as well as some runway for those who have bookings a little further into September. And certainly, I think, you know, we can do this right once, or, or we can divide it up, and I'd, I'd prefer just doing it all at once.
Thank you, and I appreciate that, Deputy Mayor. Before I recognize Counselor Cassidy, the obvious question to Counselor, to Ms. Barbone though, is, is that October one weekend that's been suggested in the amendment, is that sufficient time as well? That's the obvious question that I think the deputy mayor would have asked.
I thank you through your worship. So it is tight, but we are prepared to be able to proceed, and we've been preparing and working with legal to get the, the municipal accommodation tax bylaw ready to go. So I believe we can have it implemented in place for October, but certainly no earlier than that.
Thanks very much. Then I'll recognize Counselor Cassidy.
Thank you, your worship. I wanted to second the amendment to the amendment so we could hear from staff and discuss this possibility of doing, doing it earlier. Having heard from Ms. Barbone, I'm, I would like to withdraw my second on that amendment to the amendment.
So noted. Is there a second on Counselor Lewis's recommendation of September one? Or as we call it, to dream the impossible dream. Counselor Lewis, go ahead.
Thank you, your worship. I, I'm just going to very quickly say that while I, I think that an extra meeting could be added to the schedule at the call of the chair to deal with a public participation meeting, I do appreciate the staff's indication of a tight timeline. However, so I, I will withdraw the amendment. However, you know, I, I want to send the message very loud and clear that we recognize the fake homecoming continues to be a problem, and we will have to take necessary steps on enforcement in terms of any locations where problems arise, and that will include short-term accommodation rentals. And so I hope that hosts are, are well aware of the fact that there, you know, there are extra resources every year that go into bylaw enforcement, and, and whether this bylaw is in place or not at that time, those will need to be respected.
Thank you very much, sir. We are now with a withdrawn amendment to the amendment, dealing with the amendment. So that has been put forward by Counselor Cassidy, appropriately seconded by Counselor Pelosi. Counselor Cassidy, then Counselor Van Holst, if you've got anything you wish to add to this that would be helpful. Thank you, Counselor Cassidy. Counselor Van Holst, in light of this, anything else?
Thank, thank you, worship. So my question through you and your staff is about the, the concerns that might happen during that time of homecoming. I'd like to know if we have worked with Airbnb, that short-term accommodation provider, to deal with some of these problems. So we work directly with them because I know that they have some processes in place to deal with parties rather quickly, and I wanted to know if we've interacted with them about that and, and come up with ways to improve that, that process, or see what we can do about it to help.
So the question, I believe, was what interactions have we had with the Airbnb community and/or leadership as it relates to, to this particular issue, and I'll, if I can, look to Mr. Maythers for, for some thoughts, please.
Through your worship, the enforcement of these types of nuisance and noise complaints is, is for the most part done by the London Police Service, but also by, depending on the time of the week, by city staff. For the most part, we're just responding to a neighbor's complaint to be able to address one of these, address these issues, and we're not interacting directly with Airbnb because we may not, we wouldn't even know whether it's an Airbnb until we get to the site and the people would tell us that. So it is difficult, like on a, on a nightly basis, to be able to engage Airbnb. But if, if that's something that we learn in the future, then we can educate our bylaw officers to let them know that that may be an avenue to be able to, to correct situation. But it, it's really hard on a day-to-day basis when you're addressing these concerns in the field to be able to identify it as Airbnb and contact air, the Airbnb directly.
Thank you. Counselor Van Holst?
Well, thank you, your worship. It seems to me that we might be able to resolve the issue with that, with that contact with Airbnb, and although it might, it might be difficult, certainly what we're doing now is, is quite difficult in enacting this new legislation. And although we're not on the main motion yet, I, I wouldn't say that I'm unlikely voting against it. I, I think that there's some great opportunities for London to have short-term rentals. I think there's a number of drawbacks to, to, to going forward in this way, and there's a number of things that we haven't done, that are alternatives to, to mitigate for those those specifically. So those will be, those will be my, my comments for now.
Thank you, thank you.
Against this amendment.
And, and thank you. And Counselor Van Holst, we've got what you said, but there's just a little, I think, feedback, a little buzzback in terms of the volume or the clarity of the tone, so perhaps we'll be able to deal with that in some fashion as we go forward in this meeting. Any other comments with respect to the amendment, put forward and appropriately seconded? I see none? So with that, we will call the question on the amendment.
Closing the vote. Motion carries thirteen to one with one recused.
And I think Counselor Cassidy, we're into a package here with the motion as amended. I'll turn it back to you, please.
Yes, your worship. I'll put the motion as amended on the floor.
Do you have a second? I see Counselor Fife-Miller. Thank you. Comments or questions? I see none. We will call the question.
Very sneaky, sir.
I think so.
Thanks. So about this, and I really hope that my colleagues will, will really consider them. First, we need to ask ourselves what we're trying to address with this bylaw. Is it housing or is it nuisance tenants? And in the beginning of all of this, it was about nuisance tenants. It was about the parties, about having a no accountability framework. It was about consumer protection and neighborhood protection too, and that seems to have fallen off. And now there's a discussion about, about housing and a way that we can return units to the market for long-term accommodations. We have needs on, on pretty much all fronts. We have needs on, on the short-term side, we have needs on the, on the medium term, the long term. We have needs for purchased housing, rental housing. Where our big needs are, is affordable housing. And this doesn't address that. Council often really wants to look like it's doing something on difficult issues, and we've encountered this a number of times through the past few years. And we should, we should be taking action on difficult issues, but we shouldn't be looking for the quick fix. We need to be understanding that, that some of these issues are a little more complex than just, than just a, a quick stroke of the pen. And in this, if, if we're doing this anything otherwise than thoughtful consideration, it is just optics. In the SPPC report in last week, when we had a discussion, we, we got a look at the housing projections and the housing needs for London. For the past roughly decade, we've underperformed in terms of, and more the industry, in terms of what the projections were versus what was built. We had the ability to accommodate that, but, but the, the building permits being sought didn't meet what our projections were that we had when we did our, our development charge studies. And they're just, just minorly starting to pass what the projection was for this year, and we're not quite sure what it's going to look like for the next couple of years. So there's been a lot of talk about a housing crisis, and that may be true, but we don't know. We haven't quantified it. We're just hearing about it. We hear a lot of talk about it. So it's really incumbent on us to have a good grasp of what that is before we take some pretty drastic actions to address it. We do know, and we have quantified, the needs for affordable housing. Housing in general is a different story. And so what's, what's being proposed here is in essence of basically a backdoor expropriation by other means to try and increase the number of units available on the market for longer terms of housing. And we're not compensating for them for it. We're just, we're just telling them that they can't do it anymore. I'm going to take you back to the Uber debate from last term. I, I was against Uber, and the only reason I was against Uber was because they had come to us and asked us to take a look at our, our bylaws, because our bylaws didn't allow them to operate. They said, can you take a look at your bylaws and try to update them so that we can operate here? So we said, sure, we'll take a look at the bylaws and see if that might be something we can do. It's still subject to debate, but before we could even start down that path, Uber started operating illegally. And nonetheless, council went forward, recognizing that there are small business operators, and, and qualified it to make, made it legal. So we created a class of, of vehicles for hire that allowed for ride-sharing, like Uber and Lyft and, and others, when there wasn't one before, and we turned a class of illegal operators into legal operators. What we're doing now is we're going to take a class of legal operators and turn them into illegal operators. And that's, that should be concerning to us because there are, as we've heard from staff, there are hundreds. And that basically, these are all small business operators with hundreds of thousands of dollars of investment. There we're going to take and make them not able to do what they were legally able to do prior to this. So we need to take a look at how we really want to tackle this problem. I think absolutely we need to take measures to protect neighborhoods, to protect tenants, to protect owners of properties, to make sure that we, we can have impact on nuisance within, within the community, especially at times like party times, whether it's FOCO or otherwise. And we can do that with a bylaw. I think a bylaw is the appropriate way of doing that, and we can, we can do that through registering and licensing the short-term accommodations. What that also does is allows us to make sure that, that the accommodations for the renters are safe, that they're fire-safe, that they're, they're habitable, that people aren't getting taken advantage of.
Thirty seconds, Counselor.
If I might just have asked for an extension, not too long.
Good.
Thank you. So we, we need to be able to take, take measures to, to protect consumers and protect our residents. But I don't think that this measure going so far as to, to make a class of legal operators illegal is, is the right way of doing that. And we, we can do this through a couple of options. We can take a look and say, let's grandfather the ones that are currently operating if our concern is about the housing market, and, and then take a look at those non-owned or occupied and say, okay, going forward, no new ones can be. We can await for better information on the housing situation, the housing needs. By doing this, we have a one-time infusion potentially. We don't know what the operators are going to do with those, those residences that they own, whether they're going to return them into long-term accommodations, if they sell them off, or if they sell them to property speculators someplace else where they can get get some more, more cash. They're going to lose a lot of money when we do this, like thousands of dollars minimum just from lost bookings, from the time it takes to convert real TPs, all of those things. And the other thing we need to consider is that we're, might be kind of shooting ourselves in the foot, because this is a lot of MAT revenues that we'd be foregoing. We have a potential here. I think the operators have recognized that, that, that it's reasonable to be regulated, that it's reasonable to pay municipal accommodation taxes, it's reasonable to have some sort of safeguards on, on this industry. And, and that's our role as government. But to use this bylaw as a tool to try and infuse more housing into the city, I, I think that's, that's probably not a really good plan, and I really strongly advise against it. So I hope my colleagues will defeat the motion. I was supportive of the amendment because I saw that as, as a minor reasonable step in what I would consider a very unreasonable bylaw.
Thanks very much. I'll call on Counselor Hamou, please.
I have a few comments about this as well, just speaking about the amendment. Oh, sorry, stand. I'm always forgetting the rules, I'm sorry. I'm not really a scofflaw, but. So we are looking for family-sized units. These are things that have been, that are in the research. I just wanted to go back to a point that my esteemed colleague, Counselor Turner, said that we don't have a housing crisis in London, or that we don't have the numbers in the reports, but we do in fact have those. We have many economists that have pointed to these numbers. We've got CMHC, we've got L-Star. So if you look at their statistics and you see that there is a housing crisis in London, I don't know if, I, I can't even believe I'm arguing this.
Counselor Hamou, I'm going to stop. I didn't hear, I didn't hear Counselor Turner say that. So before I hear an objection raised, I'm just going to qualify that just a little bit if I can. I didn't hear him say that, that we did not have a crisis or concern, but I'll let you please carry on.
Counselor Turner, can you go back and say what it is? Because I want to make sure that I addressed the point correctly.
Your worship, with your indulgence, I don't want to engage in cross-debate.
And, and nor do I. So I really think that I'm going to say thank you, Counselor Turner, but, but again, from what I heard, Counselor Hamou, this was, that was the direction that I heard Counselor Turner going. So with that, but I, but I'll allow your comments to stand. I think that will be helpful. Please, go ahead.
Thank you. And that we do have, that, you know, looking at the forecast, I think that was more of what you were saying, but we do have a housing crisis. We do have people that are looking for, for cheaper rentals. And if you look at some of the numbers, there were six hundred, I believe, short-term rentals, of which four hundred and forty we will have access to. That's four hundred and forty families that we could possibly house in London. And so that covers off the point of why we're doing this for housing. Now, if we're talking about nuisance laws, that's something completely different, of course, but it also works with this in that, you know, even in my own neighborhood, while in my own neighborhood, we've had severe nuisance issues with, with Airbnb rentals. And, and a lot of times I get calls from the neighbors, since I've been a counselor, I've had calls about this very issue from my neighbors, talking about homecoming, talking about how you have students from Queens, from U of T, from Metropolitan University in Toronto, from all of the different universities come down specifically for our hoco, foco, whatever you want to call it, fake homecoming. And they use those Airbnb rentals in order to invite more people, and it creates more chaos. So, so for me, I am fully in support, in support of sanctioning and making this, you know, bringing this law, bringing this bylaw forward as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Lewis.
Thank you, your worship. So I'm going to really encourage colleagues to support this. And Counselor Turner is absolutely correct when he says this began, actually in the previous term of council, with concerns about nuisance parties arising. But what's come to light through the last four and a half, five years, since staff has first started monitoring the situation, is that this is actually a multi-layered issue. And there is a component here which impacts housing. And while we may need, Counselor Turner highlighted, we particularly need affordable housing in the city, and I don't disagree with him there. We do particularly need that. However, we need housing at all price points across the city, and the inventory numbers are available through the London Home Builders, through L-Star, through, through others, where you can see that it is actually very difficult to find a house in any price point right now in the city. Now, that market may be changing as economic factors change, but right now, that is the situation. Where I'm going to share a different interpretation is that we are somehow taking something that is legal and making it illegal. We are not. We are actually exercising our appropriate authority as council to regulate and license a business operation. And when we have long-term rentals, business, a rental unit license is required, safety inspections are required, the owner of that long-term rental has to pay a fee every year to keep that rental unit in good stead. When a hotel operator comes forward to start business in this city, they have to have proper zoning, business licenses, and all of those other things in place as well. The Airbnb hosts who are hosting or, or short-term accommodation hosts, because it's not just Airbnb, so I want to be clear about that, but the short-term accommodation hosts who have purchased a property specifically to use as a short-term rental, haven't done anything wrong in the fact that they've taken advantage of an opportunity in a regulatory void. They've been able to do it because there have been no rules. What we are recommending here today is that rules get put in place. And I think it's important to go back to the root of short-term accommodation rentals. It was supposed to be part of the sharing economy. It wasn't supposed to become a, a corporate profit-making mechanism operating hotels under the guise of short-term rental accommodations in neighborhoods, in, in homes that used to be occupied by families. So we do have something that has evolved from a way for a homeowner to perhaps supplement their income a little bit when they are not at home, or if they've got a room in their home that they could rent out for, for weekend guests to make a little bit of extra income. But it's gone beyond that. It's not about renting out space in your home while you're away anymore. It's become buying up houses, taking them off the market for renters or buyers who may want to call London home, and turning them into short-term accommodations. And that is part of the problem. That is one more layer. And it is absolutely within our jurisdiction as a council to have regulations around the business licensing, to restrict where these can go, because again, these are commercial operations. They don't belong in neighborhoods, they don't have zoning for that. So I'm really encouraging people to support this. I realize that not all owners will be pleased with this, and many of the, the hosts run excellent operations. Unfortunately, some do not. But the fact of the matter is, what we have is an operation that is functioning as a hotel, not paying the municipal accommodation tax, not zoned to, to be a hotel operation. And again, these owners have done this to take an opportunity that was available. But the void of regulation is no longer going to exist. Regulations are coming into place. A quite significant runway is being given to give them time to wrap up the bookings they have, to decide what they want to do with those properties. Maybe they wish to sell them, maybe they wish to go into the long-term rental business. They, they can make that choice. I disagree that this is going to somehow cost them thousands and thousands of dollars. People who have purchased homes are going to make, if they decide to get out and sell those homes, are going to make a tidy profit. If they are going to rent them out long-term, they will still have long-term rental income.
Thirty seconds, Counselor.
So I'm going to encourage colleagues to support this. This has been a long time coming. It has been many, many, many years. There's been significant consultation back and forth with the industry, with the operators, as well as with people in the neighborhoods where these places are located. And the time is now to move forward and put regulations in place.
Thank you. I'll call on Counselor Van Holst, then Counselor Hopkins. Go ahead, Counselor Van Holst.
So I'm, I see the...
Counselor, we're struggling to, to get the audio from your report.
Throwing out the baby with the bathwater seems to me what is, is happening here, or could, could be happening. So these short-term accommodations are a valuable service and service demand, and it's a service that London needs. And, and there's many reasons for, the owners of these have written in, and, and we have letters in our agenda that describe why people from outside London make, make use of these. I make use of these when, when I travel. And so, so it's, it's an important thing, and we're going to be stepping back in London if, if we, if we remove this possibility. Now, I, I do want to talk about the, the housing question, because it's, I, I don't believe that someone's going to purchase, say, a beat-up house, which does happen, and then invest a bunch of money into it, and then provide, provide it as affordable housing so that that investment is, is never recovered. And I, I know, I know individuals who, who do this. If they couldn't possibly fix up the property unless they had this, this extra income. And some people can only fix up the houses from time to time. They, they, they rent it out for a little while, get some money, work on that, and work on the house. So there's, there's something valuable happening here. There's an urban regeneration that happens because of these short-term rentals that, that we're not, that we're not discussing. So like Counselor Turner, I, I don't think it's, we're actually solving directly the problem that we want to solve, and nor do I see this as solving the, the housing challenges as well. So it would be much, much better for us to, to allow these long-term accommodations as, as homes in, in this city and, and simply move ahead with, say, the municipal accommodation tag if, if we, if we needed to, or, or the licensing of these. But I, I think that we're, we're, as it was said, shooting ourselves in, in the foot. Tourism is going to be harmed. The kind of economy that we're trying to build is going to be harmed when we're trying to attract people to stay here for short-term, not just weekends, but, but amounts under a month. It's going to, it's going to be a problem. And I think for those renters that are, are breaking even their own rules for Airbnb, if that's happening, they'll find other ways to make the same amount of money. So what we really need to do is focus on the nuisances and get the data, because we don't have that, and it's unfair to tell people that we're going to take away, in some cases, your livelihood based on data that we, we don't really, that we don't really have, or solutions that we haven't, haven't produced. So I see that we might be able to move forward with something like this, but I would like to try a bunch of other things first, so thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Hopkins.
Yeah, thank you, your worship, and I would like to encourage my colleagues to support the bylaw. I'm glad to see the amendment of October 1st remaining. I think we do have to allow staff some time to get the accommodation tax in place. I want first of all, start off with thanking staff. I know when we approached them about three years ago to look into this, it was really important at that time that we looked at the quality of our neighborhood. We know that housing has changed in the past three years. We talked about affordable housing and how this can help when it comes to the rental housing market. I understand and completely agree with Counselor Turner. This is not going to be a quick fix at all. But we have to address the housing in our city and also the quality of our neighborhoods, and this bylaw is addressing both of these. I want to thank staff for the amount of work that they have put into this to get us to this point. Number of public participation meetings have gone on through the past number of years. We've all been engaged with different comments, pro or for or against. And it, it's been an important debate to have in our city. I'm really glad that we've had that, and we've taken the time to get to where we are now. I, I know we've got a bit more work still to do. Obviously, the education part is going to be a key to being, to having some success here with this bylaw. But I think the other part of it is going to be about encouraging the public to comply. And it's going to take time. I, I think we can do it as a city. We can come together and address the many concerns that we have. This is just a tiny part of addressing the concerns when it comes to housing in our city. But more important, it does address the quality of our neighborhoods as well. So hoping that my colleagues can support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Counselor Cassidy.
Thank you, your worship. I agree with Counselor Turner that how this began, and this did begin in the last term of council, as really exploring the issue of short-term accommodations, how widespread they were in London when we first looked at it, I think in, I think it was 2017. They weren't that widespread, and, and the direction we gave to staff was to keep monitoring this situation, and that's what staff have done. I don't think that this has been a quick fix. I think we have been looking at this for a very long time. I think staff have been looking at this for a very long time. And, and I, for one, my viewpoint has evolved from looking at the potential problems that short-term accommodations cause in neighborhoods. I have one in my ward that has been brought to my attention for many years now. But it has morphed, and city staff have evolved in how they're looking at it and, and the housing issue and the lack of affordable housing in the City of London. The fact that over six hundred of these short-term accommodations, many of the six hundred, used to be long-term rentals and have been taken off the market. So we know that they have had a direct effect on the availability of long-term rentals in the City of London. And city staff at the meeting did a very good job of addressing how this is an issue in London and how it is an issue across the country. There are other cities that have enacted a similar bylaw. I believe the City of Toronto is one, but I will defer to staff just to confirm that, that Toronto is one that has made owner occupation a, a part of their bylaw. This, the, the issue of housing at all price points, at all levels of affordability across the city is, is a significant issue. We address it in many, many ways, through inclusionary zoning at some point in the future, hopefully soon, through bonusing, which unfortunately, we're going to be losing soon. But we've, we keep saying we have to use every tool available to us, and this is one of the tools that's available to us. I don't come to this decision lightly. I'm not happy that people will be losing some investment on this. I'm not happy to, to cause this pain for some people. But we've done this, as, as another counselor said, we enact legislation all the time that has an effect on people. At one point, we, we made it mandatory that pet shops, et cetera, places selling domestic animals, companion animals, can only use rescue animals. I'm sure we affected people's profits at that point. There have been changes at the public health level, where in industries like nail salons that didn't used to be regulated, all of a sudden are regulated, and, and those that don't meet the requirements of those regulations, some have closed down. It happens. It's not, it's not pleasant, and I don't relish doing it, but I also know that we do have a housing crisis in London. City staff were excellent in responding to the questions from committee. We heard from Mr. Dickens, we heard from Mr. Kotolik, we heard from Mr. Maythers, and it was a cross-divisional approach to this, and the collaboration that went into creating this bylaw was apparent. And I agree with Counselor Hopkins, your worship. I want to say thank you to staff as well. I just want to check with staff and, and confirm that, that, that I'm correct. to staff as well. I just want to check with staff and and confirm that 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 I'm correct, that Toronto has this this in their bylaw as well. Or maybe just a quick comment from staff on how they see how our housing situation and the short term rental market, how it's affected the situation in London.
Let's ask Mr. Mather's.
Through Your Worship, as far as the other municipalities that have similar policies, we have a list of at least 12, Toronto being the the largest, several other GTA municipalities and other southwestern municipalities, including Windsor and Saria. We have heard from our our Director of Municipal Housing that that he feels that this will have a positive impact on affordability, maybe not at the the lowest levels of affordability, but would provide a benefit to to many of the Londoners looking for housing. So that is that is the recommendation that we brought forward to you. So any other questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Counselor Cassidy?
Those are my comments. Thank you, Your Worship.
Thank you. I have no other speakers on the list. This is we are now voting on the amended, the motion as amended. And so with that, I will ask the clerk to pull that up on the screen for voting.
Counselor Hamu? Close closing the vote, motion carries 12 to 2 with 1 recused.
Cassidy, I believe you have one more item to deal with.
I do, Your Worship, because sitting is the new smoking. I stand and I put item 16, which is 4.4, on the floor.
Thanks very much. This is the issue dealing with more licensed childcare spaces. We appreciate you standing. Comments or questions with respect to this item? I know one colleague had declared a pecuniary interest. I see a question. Deputy Mayor, go ahead.
Not a question, a comment. First, I don't sit on the committee, but I want to thank the committee for for supporting moving this forward to council. I hope my council colleagues support it. Together with Counselor Palozza and Counselor Hamu, the three of us are interested in seeing what role the city can do to help facilitate more licensed childcare spaces. Our main concern is one of an equity issue. Those who have licensed childcare spaces at this point are unlikely to give them up. And we know as the cost comes down through the early years agreement with the federal and provincial governments and the the move to $10 daycare over a series of years, there will be more and more Londoners who will be able to afford childcare and perhaps even enter back into the workforce. Given those who have childcare are unlikely to give them up as the cost goes down, the only way that we can provide opportunities for those who can now afford it is to help try to facilitate the creation of new spaces. What role does the municipal government play in that? We don't know yet. But the direction to our staff is to see where we could be of some assistance in helping to convert unlicensed childcare spaces into licensed ones, which is the quickest possible way to create new licensed spaces and provide more opportunities for those Londoners who want to take advantage of the lowering costs of childcare in our community. I don't know if my colleagues would have anything to add who wrote the letter with me, but I hope council supports this move tonight.
Thank you. You are quite correct. It was a comment, not a question. Any other comments? I see Counselor Palozza wanting to contribute, please.
Thank you, Your Worship, and having signed on to this letter, as it is a paramount issue in this, one of several paramount issues in the city. As we talk about our childcare and who takes care of your your children through the the day or the evening when you need care, this is also a key component to our COVID recovery. As we emerge from the pandemic, we know that women have been disproportionately affected and marginalized during this. So this is an opportunity to get more women back into the workplace as well, recognizing families will have opportunities for licensed care. But first, you would need to find a space. And perhaps those who are already occupying space will just expand the availability that they're taking up in those spaces because they'll have more income to pay for more of the time that they would want. So this is going to be a key component for us. And thank you to my colleagues and committee for hearing us and colleagues today of looking at how the city can help facilitate the rollout of information and making sure that those Londoners recognize we have a low employment rate of 4.8 and employers are desperate across all sectors to get people back to work. This is one more tool in the toolbox that we can do with a low economic impact from the city and the tax base, but really mobilizing community to help each other and accomplish great things to each other.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other comments, colleagues? I see none. We'll call the vote.
Closing the vote, motion carries 14 to 0 with 1 recused.
That is my report, I believe.
Quite extensive and thorough as always. Thank you. Colleagues, I'll now turn your attention to the Ninth Report of SPPC. I'll call on the Deputy Mayor, please.
Thank you, Your Worship. The way I'm going to handle the 19th Report of SPPC is I'm going to do everything except for the matter that I had a conflict with, at which point I'll turn it over to Counselor Palozza to chair the rest of the meeting. I do realize that there was also a conflict declared in the meeting by Counselor Salie on number, business case number four within the the LCRN components. So it's my intention to deal with the LCRN components separately as well. So I'm happy to move everything except number 11 and number 12, which is the London Community Recovery Network, as well as the Appointments to Western University's Board of Governors, unless colleagues would like something else pulled separately.
Well, then let's ask that question. Does anyone wish any other item dealt separately? I see none. Back to you, Deputy Mayor.
Then I'll move the full committee report with the exceptions of items 11 and 12.
So noted, comments or questions on all items with the exception of 4.1 and 4.2? I see none. We'll call the vote.
Closing the vote, motion carries 15 to 0.
Deputy Mayor?
Yes, and the conflict was related to item 4, Part A, Section 4, which was Business Case Number 4. So what I would like to do, if there's no objections from colleagues, is put everything except that part on the floor for consideration so that so that we can deal with that one separately.
So to be clear, you're talking about 4.1, items A, B1, B2, B3. I believe that gets us to where you need to be.
Yes, and I'm happy to move the other items contained within that section, too. There's some directions to the mayor and and others. It's just I'd just like to deal with Business Case 4 separately.
Fair enough. Any comments or questions with respect to all items except 4.1B4? Because there was a C in there. I'm sorry, someone had their hand raised? I did not see that then. So clerk, I'll ask you, with the exception of Business Case 4, to call the vote, please.
Closing the vote, motion carries 15 to 0.
Deputy Mayor?
Yes, and the final item is Business Case 4, which is talent attraction and labor force growth for a sustainable economic recovery. I'm happy to put that on the floor for consideration.
Comments or questions, colleagues? I know we talked about this at some lake that SPPC. I see none. We'll call the vote.
Closing the vote, motion carries 14 to 0 with 1 recused. I don't recall hearing a declaration of pecuniary interest.
So noted, but I think by virtue of the vote that was that was put in place, I think you'll note that that was picked up by the Deputy Mayor, unless you have any other clarity around that. Deputy Mayor?
No, I think what the clerk is saying is although it was in the report, there wasn't a verbal confirmation of the conflict at the start of the meeting. So the clerk was probably looking for that to occur from Counselor Salie.
Certainly knew what the clerk was saying. Thank you. Back to you, please.
Sure.
Clerk, are you looking for a ruling on that? Listen, any any of our colleagues are able to vote as they choose in these. And if they vote to abstain, that is their privilege as well. So clerk, do you have anything you wish to add to that?
Yes, Your Worship, there is a requirement under the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act, and just seeking clarification.
So we'll ask the individual who voted to abstain, who did not indicate at the start of the meeting that they had the conflict, to so note the perception of conflict, please.
So you're referring to me, right? Counselor Salie?
That would be you, Counselor Salie. Absolutely, sir.
Okay, cool. Might have been another guy. Or yeah.
You're up.
So for 4.1, it was similar to the earlier recusal, which is related to employed by federal government, CBSA. If I recall correctly, the 4.1 had to do with immigration and immigration partnerships and stuff like that as well with 4.1, if I'm not mistaken. So that's why I recused from that for the recovery of the community network with the talent attraction. There was migration, but there was also immigration noted in that business case, if I'm not mistaken.
So I'll ask the clerk, does that get us to where we need to be?
Yes, Your Worship, thank you.
Thank you very much. And we appreciate the point. And thank you, clerk, for making sure that you keep the mayor quite focused on such things. Thank you. Deputy, go ahead.
And speaking of interests, I have an interest on the remaining items, so I'll have someone else present that. Counselor Palozza was willing to do so.
You have someone in mind, Deputy Mayor? Counselor Palozza, please go ahead.
Thank you, Your Worship. It's a pleasure to wrap up the Ninth Report of the Strategic Planning and Priorities Committee with a tabling of item 12 being 4.2, the consideration of appointments to the Western University Board of Governors. This would appoint Laurie Higgs and Marlene McGrath to the board, recognizing Deputy Mayor Morgan and Counselor Hamer both declared conflicts on this one prior.
You don't mind, Counselor, if I just double check with the clerk to make sure that you have those two? Are you good with those two declarations, clerk, please?
Your Worship, yes, but no comment, really.
I didn't think there'd be additional comment, but I really appreciate where you've taken us to this point. Counselor Palozza, are we good? Any other comments or questions with respect to 4.2, where two of our colleagues have declared an interest? I see none. Let's call that vote.
Closing the vote, motion carries 13 to 0 with 2 recused.
So I'll come back now to the Deputy back to the report, sir.
No, that concludes the report.
Thank you very much. I'll now turn your attention, if I could, please, to the Ninth Report of the Corporate Services Committee. Counselor Lewis, would you take us through it?
Thank you, Your Worship. I'm prepared to put the entire report on the floor, although I'm not sure if colleagues wish anything pulled. I haven't been given prior notice, but we'll look around and see if there are any.
So we'll check that. Does anyone wish to have any items within Corporate Services dealt with separately? Counselor Hopkins?
Yes, I I guess I should pull number 6, 4.1, which is the consideration of appointment to the ECAC. I just have a few questions there.
Absolutely. Thank you. Counselor Lewis?
Thank you, Your Worship. If with your indulgence, then I'll put the other items all on the floor so that oh, sorry, Counselor Turner has his hand up now.
Counselor Turner, why don't you go ahead?
Thanks. I just have a question about 2.3 or 4, the Standing Committee Meetings and Annual Meeting Calendar.
A question, or do you wish to have them voted on separately? Your pleasure.
Depending on the answer, it will be affect the vote. So I'd like it pulled so I can do that separately.
So that's items 2, 3, and just 2, 3, just clarify, please. Counselor Turner, looking to you, which one?
Yeah, just just number 4, 2.3.
All right. So noted. Thank you very much. Anything else, colleagues? So we're dealing with the with all items with the exception of 2, 3, and 4, 1? Back over to you, Counselor Lewis. You put those on the floor?
Then I'm prepared to put items 1 through 3, 5, and 7 on the floor. These are generally some quick housekeeping items that we were dealing with at Corporate Services, including the corporate mileage rate for our employees. I will note to counselors that counselor compensation for that would be reviewed separately. And the discussion at committee staff indicated that that would be looked at for the beginning of the next term of council. And the other item that I would just draw folks' attention to is 2.2, the 2021 Annual Update on Budweiser Gardens. I think despite the difficult year they had, it is a good news story in that originally projecting to be $400,000 in the red, there was actually a small profit and some funds returned to the city as a result.
Thank you. Any other comments on on all of those items as cited by Counselor Lewis? Any other comments or questions from the floor? Well, Counselor, I see no more. So with that, shall we call the question? Clerk, if you would, please. So we ask for a little patience, colleagues. All things in the fullness of time.
Counselor Hamer? Closing the vote, motion carries 15 to 0.
Counselor Lewis?
Put item 4 on the floor now. This is the Standing Committee Meetings and Annual Meeting Calendar update for next year. I actually had a question for staff on this as well, but I believe Counselor Turner and I may have the same question. So I think if we can look to him, he asked for this to be pulled.
Well, if he'd like to, let's just see. Any comments or questions? Go ahead, Counselor Turner.
Thank you, Your Worship. Just with respect to this item, I haven't didn't have a chance to take a look at the tape, but I note in the committee report that basically what was recommended is what was passed. There is a caveat in there that says it been understood that adjustments to the calendar may be required from time to time in order to accommodate special additional meetings or changes to governing legislation. We received a correspondence from Mr. Wallace of the London Development Institute expressing some concerns about the the market reduction in frequency of planning and environment committee meetings. And that's one of the one of the main functions of councils to be able to to help move those applications forward and through through their processing. Consolidating those meetings leads to fairly lengthy lengthy meetings, as we've found in previous times. So I was wondering if what nature of discussion that we had with respect to Mr. Wallace's correspondence and what resolutions were available.
Thank you. Shall we ask the clerk?
Thank you, and through you, Your Worship, to the counselor. We did consider a number of factors in coming to this this calendar for your consideration. One of the things to recall is that in 2020, council meetings were every two weeks. We moved to a three week council meeting cycle from 2021 onwards. So any additional planning and environment committee meetings, those reports would be going to the same council meeting where we if we were to add them. So what that leaves is length of meetings. We actually looked at the average and median times. They have stayed relatively consistent over the past couple of years. And one thing to note is that I understand the past couple of years, and one thing to note is that I understand there may be some changes coming in regards to delegation of authority related to alternative public consultation, and with respect to minor zoning amendments, and that's pursuant to bill thirteen that has yet to come forward, I don't know if Mr Mather's going to add any detail on that, but we did discuss that with Mr Mather's about the PEC meetings for the proposed calendar.
So let's see, Mr Mather's, can you add something to that, please?
Through, through your worship, all that I really had to add was, from a practical standpoint, what we look for as staff is, is do we have that planning committee as close as possible to the actual council date, so it gives us the most amount of time to be able to prepare the work we need to do to get those reports moving forward, so when I went through the calendar, it looked like we were pretty much bang on the week before council, or at least the week before strategic priorities, which is the closest that planning ever gets to council, so that'll give us the maximum amount of time to be able to reach those deadlines, as far as the length of meetings, as mentioned by councillor Turner, that it could result in longer meetings, but as staff, we do feel we'll be able to beat timelines, it just may result in some longer meetings at some points.
Councillor Turner?
Thanks, well, I don't like to do this, but I'd refer it back for, perhaps I'll move to refer it back, otherwise I'd vote to defeat it, I have still a lot of concerns about that, PEC meetings when they go long are long, sometimes council meetings can go long, but PEC meetings are a different animal in terms of how long they can be, and I really worry about, about how effective they would be, we do have on occasion two committee reports from the same committee going forward to a council meeting, so that's not an anomaly, so, so I have reservations about this, I don't know if others do too, I guess I would look for a second or for a referral back for consideration of additional PEC meetings.
Well, let's see if you have a second here for that. I see councillor Hopkins seconding that.
Sorry, if I might just also note that, I mean, the inverse can be true, a meeting can be cancelled, it's harder to call a new meeting.
Okay, councillor Hopkins still seconds it, and by the way, for the record, I want you to know, I think council meetings move quite quickly, actually, and sometimes not. Comments or questions on the amendment, I see councillor Hopkins, go ahead, please.
Yeah, thank, thank you, your worship, I'm happy to second this referral back, I, I think we, anyone sitting on planning knows how long and intense these meetings can be, and I, I think having added meetings on the agenda can always be removed, we did that this month, in fact, and we're still able to follow up with the commitments that are required by us, so I'm happy to support it and referring it back.
Thank you, now, I'm going to actually, if it's appropriate, I'm going to ask councillor Lewis if you've got any comments, because at one stage, you were coming in, you've indicated that you've got something to say, perhaps you don't, that may be odd, but I'm going to refer back and ask if you have any comments or questions that would be related to the amendment.
Thank you, your worship, no, councillor Turner was asking actually the same question that I had wanted to ask, I had asked the clerk offline and had gotten those details back, but I'm not, I will take the opportunity to speak to the referral in that I do think that it's easier to cancel meetings than add additional ones, I'm also mindful particularly of the fact that next year's calendar will represent a meeting schedule for a new council, and while some of us may be back, some may not, and I think for those who are, are considering what those committees, especially new councillors, considering what committees they may wish to put their name forward for, I do think it's easier to cancel than to add, so I actually can support the referral here, and I will say I agree with councillor Hopkins as, as well, when planning meetings go long, they seem to go very long, and, and they can be very difficult to get through even a few applications in a timely manner, if, if there's a large amount of public participation, and we don't want to discourage that, we frequently see our scheduled items occurring long past their scheduled time, and that discussion is good, but it may benefit us to have a few more meetings on the calendar.
So noted, comments, any other comments on the referral back, councillor Pelosi, please?
Thank you, your worship, I'll certainly report, support the referral back, my main concern, realizing is probably not by coincidence, I haven't served on the green paper agendas, the meetings are long, and I do enjoy the committees I do and have served on and rotated through, and as councillor Hopkins said earlier tonight, when she delivered her report, that they received seven different groups of people for public participation meetings, and we know that depending on the issue, as councillor Lewis said, a lot of people could come out for it, they get their five minutes, and it's a barrier to participation if they don't know how long it's going to be, and it's like, do you have three hours to sit in chambers or on hold, and that's where my, my main concerns lie, so maybe it's more frequent shorter meetings, committee would know that going in, and the public would be perhaps better served, knowing that our timelines are a little bit tighter to serve them.
Any other comments on the referral back? I see no one else on my list, with that, we will call the question. The clerk is seeking some clarity, and I'll come back to councillor Turner if I can, and that is clarity around number of meetings, or just referring it back to refer it back, was there some point of reference you wanted to add to this councillor Turner, and we'll see if we can, your second will agree with that, and then determine that we go appropriately from there, and frankly invite any other discussion if that's worthy, councillor Turner, any help for that?
Your worship, the intent is to consider any additional meeting dates for planning and environment committee that they might be able to, to identify, I'm not in position to identify a number or a frequency or anything like that, I think staff are best suited to do that, but in light of the concerns that we discussed, coming back with the, with that calendar that has more planning and environment committee meetings than it's currently on the calendar.
I don't see that that changes the, the seconders' reference point, does that give you enough clarity clerk? Nodding his head comfortably, yes, so with that, I see no other speakers, shall we call the vote clerk?
I will mark councillor Cassidy as absent. Closing the vote, motion carries thirteen to one.
Thank you, councillor Lewis.
Thank you, your worship, that brings us to item six, the consideration of appointment to the Ecological Community Advisory Committee, this was asked to be pulled, I know councillor Hopkins indicated she had some questions on that, just before I look to you to, to seek those questions out, I will just share with colleagues that we did have a bit of debate around this, there were previously two applicants to the Environmental Community Advisory Committee that were recommended by the chair of the Ecological Community Advisory Committee to apply their, their skills there, this is the former EPAC, it is a very technically oriented committee, and there was an encouragement for them to apply there, they did so, in the process, a third applicant also applied, but there were only two vacancies on the fifteen committee, fifteen member committee makeup, so there was a vote, and two members of the three who applied were selected.
Thank you, let's see if councillor Hopkins has anything she wishes to add to that.
Yes, your worship, and, and thank you to the chair for that clarification, I didn't have an opportunity to look at the tape, and wasn't sure what the debate was and what it looked like, we, they, I've got to get used to these new advisory names, too, the ECAC, they are looking at getting two more members, so they were accepted, is what I understand, so now, moving forward, they have a full complement at, at advisory group and can move forward, I just wanted that clarification, I wasn't sure exactly if it was supported or not.
Thank you councillor Hopkins, I see that councillor Lewis is nodding his head, but since that does not record well, I wonder if you could go verbal on us?
Yes, your worship, happy to verbally confirm that the appointment of these two members would fill out the fifteen member recommended size of the advisory committee according to the advice that we got from the deputy clerk, Ms Westlake Power at the meeting.
Thank you very much, councillor Hopkins, anything else from you?
No, I appreciate the information, thank you, and for the work that the committee did.
Thank you, any other comments or questions on item four point one? Sorry councillor Turner, I saw a hand up, was that a hand up, or was that not a hand up? Okay. But councillor Lewis has a hand up, you'd be pleased to know, go ahead councillor Lewis.
Thank you, your worship, I just want to add one more point of clarification for colleagues, and it was information provided to us by the deputy clerk at the committee meeting, which is that the advisory committee terms of reference that we have now do allow for the fifteen voting member group to also bring in additional members to work on working group actions as they are needed, so certainly the third individual, the committee may reach out to them and invite them to be part of a working group, and, and give them an opportunity to start to engage with that committee should a future vacancy arise.
So noted, thanks very much, I have no other speakers on the list, so with that, we'll call the question, this is now on item four point one.
Councillor Hummer? Closing the vote, motion carries fifteen to zero.
Councillor Lewis?
That is Corporate Services Committee.
Thank you very much, appreciate that, now colleagues, for the benefit of the public, we have our ninth report of council in closed session, we have a couple of items to report out in public, very pleased to call on councillor Lehman, please.
Thank you, your worship, I'll report out the ninth report of the council in closed session, one item, the property acquisition at one thirty-four Wellington Road, Wellington Gateway Project, that on the recommendation of the deputy city manager, finance supports with concurrence of the director, construction and infrastructure services on the advice of the director of realty services with respect to the property located at one thirty-four Wellington Road, further described as part of lot twenty-five, front concession geographic township of Westminster, being part one, plan thirty-three R dash sixty-seven twenty-one, being all of pin zero eight three five eight dash zero 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 three LT, containing an area of approximately five thousand sixty-nine square feet, as shown on the location map as appendix B, for the purpose of future road improvements to accommodate the Wellington Gateway Project, the following actions be taken, A, the offer submitted by Goran Mamika, the vendor, to sell the project or the subject property of the city for the sum of six hundred and fifty thousand be accepted, subject to the terms and conditions set out in the agreement as appendix C, and B, the financing for this acquisition be approved, as set out in the source of financing report here too, as appendix A, thank you.
Thank you, you're putting it on the floor, do you have a second there though? I see councillor Turner, are you seconding, you are not seconding, I see councillor Fife Miller seconding, then any comments or questions? Let's now go to you councillor Turner.
I'll recuse as I own a property within the land value uplift radius of the property.
Now, I'm sure the clerk caught that at the very beginning, but why don't we just like double check, so that when you recuse yourself, it'll all work well?
Your worship, it is on the record, and I do have it.
Perfect, well, I think you're clear to recuse, any other comments or questions, colleagues? I see none, so with that councillor Lehman, if it's good by you, we'll call the question. Thank you. Call the question.
Closing the vote, motion carries thirteen to one with one recuse.
Colleagues, we have no deferred matters, but we councillor Turner for the inquiry, please.
Thank you, your worship, this morning, through press release, the, the city identified that a couple of the aquatic facilities, the outdoor aquatic facilities in the city would not be available for use this summer, I was wondering specifically with the, with respect to the Thames Park Pool, if staff might be able to provide a bit more of a, of an explanation of the situation and, and possible courses of action to help mitigate the impacts on the neighborhood.
Well, let's, let's ask Ms Smith, I see she's up there, could you please give us some insights?
Thank you, and through you, your worship, this was a very difficult situation to share, however, due to the severe structural issues, and in the interest of public safety, we've had to close Thames Pool this season, we engaged an external aquatic consultant to review the shape of the facility last Wednesday, and they will actually be returning next week to conduct a thorough x-ray of the pool floor, to determine the extent of the damage, and to look at where exactly the break in piping has occurred, we'll also share the blueprint, blueprints of the pool, so that they can provide a high level cost in recommendations for repair, we'll update council at the time of what those recommendations for repair are, and how much potentially that will cost, so we know the community is very disappointed in this news, and Thames Pool is extremely popular, not just for families and individuals in the neighborhood, but also for, it's a destination for the whole city, so we will be providing free swim passes to families and individuals that live near Thames Pool, so that they can access other outdoor pools across our city, in addition, our staff have increased aquatic programming across all of our outdoor pools to accommodate all the customers who have already signed up for aquatic programs this summer at Thames Pool, and if they don't choose to go to an alternative location, we will also offer a refund, and I understand just recently that the Aquatic Club has moved their major event this summer to our indoor Canada Games Aquatic Centre, and that our swim team practices will now occur at our new East Lions Pool, and they will also be accommodated at the Aquatic Centre, too. Thank you.
And thank you, any follow up to that councillor Turner?
No, thank you, Ms Smith, through you, your worship, it's helpful, and I'm sure there'll be a lot of questions from the community in the days to come, but I wanted to provide an opportunity for, for an explanation, and I know this is disappointing news to all, and especially me, I live close by, and I know my, my neighborhood shares the disappointment as well, but I know that staff are working hard to resolve the, the situation as best they can, thank you.
Thank you, and thank you, Ms Smith, as well, no other inquiries, there is one emergent motion, and I will turn this now over to the deputy mayor, please.
Yes, happy to chair this, this section of the meeting, given I believe mayor Holder would like to speak first to the letter that was provided, and potentially introduce the motion.
Thanks deputy mayor, and colleagues, you recall fairly recently, a letter was co-signed, authored by myself, co-signed by councillor Pelosi, deputy mayor Morgan, and councillor Lewis, could well have been signed by so many of you who indicated an interest to support. Colleagues, as our letter states, we're requesting your support to remove Trooper Mark Wilson's name from all City of London and Met 80s, including a park in northwest London, and a street in the area of Hale and Trafalgar, and to remove all related references from the city's website. Last week, it was revealed he pleaded guilty in two thousand and four to assaulting a woman at a base in Quebec, and as we all know, this council made a commitment to creating a safe environment for women and girls, which made the City of London the first in all of Canada to make this a strategic priority, I firmly believe that words matter, they matter how, less however, when they are not reinforced by action, it is why, colleagues, your support for this motion is critical, I will say to the survivor, we applaud your It is my hope our council's action on this night will afford you some measure of peace and assist in some small way with healing. You've done the right thing. We honor your courage and persistence, and also your years of service to our country. Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
Yes, and I'm just going to go to the clerk to see if I didn't bring my copy of the procedure bylaw with me, but is leave required when an emergent motion is presented or not?
Through His Worship, yes. Under Section 20.2, introduction requires a two-thirds vote, leave is required.
Okay, I'll look for a motion for leave to allow the mayor to introduce his motion.
Thank you.
Okay. Moved by Counselor Pelosi, leave seconded by Counselor Lewis. We will open that for voting.
Closing the vote. Motion carries 15 to 0.
Your Worship, you have leave.
Thank you. I've made the comments that I've made, and you'll see the motion that is in front of you, consistent with the comments that I've made. And I will put that motion forward for council's consideration, and I believe I have a second there.
Okay, I see Counselor Pelosi seconding. I will start a speakers list on the moved and seconded motion. I have Counselor Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer, Presiding Chair. This is a tough one for me, and I want to share very honestly with people. Carl and Carolyn Wilson are people I consider to be friends. They're members of the same legion I'm at. We've sat and had beers together. I've promoted some of the charitable work that they've done in the past for a number of good causes in this community. And on Friday morning, I sat and chatted with Carolyn in the yard at their home. I've chatted with Carl and their son, Sean. This has not been an easy week for them, just as the last number of years has not been easy for the victim annually, when she has, as she has shared through her telling her story, that these things have caused a trigger for her. And we have to weigh the victim's impact on this, too. And that does not diminish, should not diminish in our minds or in our hearts, the fact that Mark Wilson did give his life in the line of service for our country. And that is a noble sacrifice that he's made, that his family has lived with since his passing, but it doesn't absolve the fact that there was an earlier situation where he did wrong and pled guilty, and that's a matter of record. So this is a struggle. And not only did I sit with the Wilsons and talk with them about this beforehand, I also took the opportunity on the weekend to go and knock on the doors of the homes of the people who live on what right now is Trooper Wilson Place. And there was mixed but respectful discussion. There are a couple of residents on the street who were very strongly in favor of changing the name right away. There were others who were less so, but what everybody genuinely found consensus on is that as we move forward through this process, they want to be involved and they want to continue to have the site honor Canadian veterans in some way, shape, or form. And I will share with colleagues on the Part B of this motion, that I've already reached out to our city manager and to Mr. Maythers, whose team will be leading this, and I'll continue to work with them to make sure that the residents are involved. They're going to need to have address changes made. They're going to need to be compensated for that. They need to have a voice in what their street is going to be called moving forward. But I'm supporting this because I think we also have to recognize not just our commitment to a safe city for women and girls, but the mayor referenced this. The victim in this case also signed up to put on a uniform and serve our country, and we have to honor that she did that as well. So this is not, this is not a decision that I think any of us takes any sort of pleasure in. This is not a gotcha moment. This is not a, this is a moment where we are balancing a very emotional question. And we do know that a family has lost a son, but that does not change the reality that there is a woman who is still feeling pain and experiencing what I might describe as post-traumatic stress of a sort every time that she reads a story or sees this come up in the news. And so I think it's in the best interest of all involved, for the victim, for the Wilsons, for the folks who call the current Trooper Wilson Place home, that we move forward on this, that we do so respectfully, but that we also do so with reasonable speed and relatively quickly. Because one thing that I've heard from both the Wilson family and from residents on the street is they don't want this to be a long dragged-out process. They'd like us to make a decision and move forward with whatever that decision is going to be. And for me, I'm going to be supporting this motion tonight because I respect their wishes on that. I don't think that we should be leaving the street, the residents there waiting for an unknown length of time while there continues to be a public debate around this. I don't think we need to have a public debate. Trooper Wilson gave some honorable service to the country, but he also did something that was wrong, and we have to balance both of those things out. So I just want to share that this has been an emotional week, having these conversations with individuals, and I hope as we move forward, we do so respectfully.
Thank you. Right on, five minutes. And given my microphone doesn't interrupt others, I'll have to use the hand signals or, so thank you for those comments. I'll look for other speakers. Counselor Pelosi.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer. Recognizing that this council made a commitment at the beginning of our term in 2018 to help create a safe London for women and girls, I'm sure none of us ever thought we'd come to this juncture in decision-making. But in 2018, we committed to making, creating a safe London for women and girls, to be at the heart of all our municipal decision-making, planning, policies, and most importantly, our practices. We were proud of this historical commitment we made. We've had community conversations about it. We discussed the expected result to decrease male violence against women and girls who are subject to abuse through all aspects of their lives, including workplace harassment. At this point, it is an inconvenience for some to rename their addresses, and absolutely, it was not that long ago they had do this change in the first place. I appreciate that, and I appreciate their openness for conversation as we move forward in this. A couple of years ago, we began the process of the city's street renaming policies of our streets and facility assets, realizing this policy, too, was several decades out of print. And at that time, all we considered while naming things was the Municipal Addressing Advisory Group of our two words too similar that we can reuse first responders. As that policy will come back before this council this summer for public consultation with an implementation with the next term of council that will take our seats and guide this city. I believe it is time that this is not just a one-off, that we are doing an important conversation within our community in a timely fashion as called upon. So I ask for your support today of the decisions of one and two that are before us, and I thank you for standing with victims who've come forward, who have already lived in darkness, who feel silenced, and having these uncomfortable conversations, but ones that are paramount to our community, to show that we are taking this seriously, making safe places, and taking leadership. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Other speakers? Counselor Cassidy.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer. I'm going to preemptively ask for an extension because I might go up to a minute over, and I believe Counselor Hopkins will move that extension for me.
Moved by Counselor Hopkins, seconded by Counselor Pelosi, a one-for-one-minute extension, giving Counselor Cassidy six minutes. I'll just do this by hand. All those in favor? Okay, the clerk will answer.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you. So once again, we have a case before us that's come up unexpectedly as a result of a media story. The proper process would be for us to refer this to committee. Our council procedure bylaw defines an emergent motion as one that without, if it's not directed through the appropriate standing committee, could result in irreparable harm or loss to the corporation. I don't think this is an emergent matter, but I do think that this could result in irreparable harm to other parties, including the survivor and the Wilson family. The matter concerns two people who have sacrificed greatly in service to our country. And in that service, one soldier lost their life, and the other suffered grievous harm. As a country, we ask so much of our soldiers. We ask them to leave their families behind and go to foreign lands to kill other human beings. We ask them to put themselves in harm's way to witness horrific and awful things and to watch their comrades die. And what do we offer in return? A plaque for those who perish and the brush-off for survivors who've been failed by the leadership of the organization in which they served. As a society, we have failed them. A family has lost a son and a brother, a husband and a father. In exchange for this loss, a name on a plaque seems like woefully inadequate compensation. Mr. and Mrs. Wilson lost their son. They just wanted him to come home. Mark's children didn't ask for a war hero. They don't love him because they don't love him because there's a street and a park named for him. They loved their dad because he was their dad. And what about the other soldier in this story? This soldier, she also risked her life for us. She enlisted knowing those risks, but like so many women who have served in our military, I'm sure she didn't foresee the unique dangers she faced from within. As a result, she lost a piece of herself, and her family lost the woman they once knew. She's come forward despite the pitfalls faced by every woman, every woman brave enough to tell her truth. This woman is a warrior, and my heart goes out to her. When we've been wronged, hearing the words "I'm sorry" and seeing genuine remorse can sometimes go a long way in helping us to find healing. Right here and now, we stand on stolen land, all of us. We are in the process of seeking forgiveness from and reconciliation with the people whose lands, languages, and cultures were stolen. Throughout the country, there is an active movement to review the place names associated with those who in our history committed grievous wrongs. All parents should know the importance of teaching our children to say sorry and to ask for forgiveness. From the moment they could talk, I taught my children to say sorry. I know Mrs. Wilson would have encouraged her son to apologize and to try to make amends, and would this have helped? I don't know, and none of us will ever know. Death has robbed everyone in this story: parents, siblings, a spouse, children. And this soldier, this survivor, will never know if forgiveness would have been sought or granted. Most tragically of all, we don't know if apologies, remorse, and amends would have helped her to find healing. In naming places after notable individuals, we cannot possibly know what will eventually surface from each one's past. We have to stop dealing with these situations in this manner. In placing people on high pedestals, we put expectations on them that nobody can live up to. We are all flawed and imperfect. Tonight, I can tell you that I'm not interested in only dealing with one name and one set of places. I don't want to continue to see every imperfect person held up for scrutiny one at a time over the years. It's time for a comprehensive review, and I would like to make an amendment to the emergent motion. I would like to add a Part C, that staff be directed to begin a comprehensive review to identify all instances where city streets and amenities have been named for specific individuals to determine if any of these places warrant renaming under current policies. Make no mistake, there are no winners here. There's nothing but tragedy, sorrow, and grief. For what it's worth, I just want to say to everyone involved in this tragic situation how incredibly sorry I am. So I offer that amendment, and I think I have a second there.
So, yes, moved to add that Part C, and I saw Counselor Pelosi second it. Or Counselor Hopkins, sorry. I was looking at Counselor Pelosi, and then I looked over. Counselor Hopkins seconded it. So we'll move to debate on the amendment to the original motion, and I'll look for speakers on the amendment. Counselor Hopkins.
Point of information.
Counselor Pelosi.
Point of information is that wording being added or sent to us, if we could review it, to have a proper debate on it.
Yes, that's a very good point. If the clerk could make sure that that amendment is up and available in East Scribe so people can see it, I won't close the debate until everybody's had a chance to read it, but I will go to Counselor Hopkins, who wanted to speak to it.
Yes, thank you. And I'm just looking up at the screen, and I see that civic administration be directed to begin a comprehensive review to identify all instances where city streets and amenities have been named for specific individuals to determine if any of these places warrant renaming under current policies. I thought I'd just read it out, just so the public is aware of it as well. I am seconding this. I, before I go on, I just want to thank Counselor Cassidy for her statement that she just made. To me, I know it wasn't very easy for you to do that, but I so much appreciated the thoughtfulness and that the conversation doesn't stop here as we deal with Trooper Wilson. I think the conversation has to continue because by doing these changes, we are creating more harm than good. And I do think and believe that we need to not only have a comprehensive review, but to really have a better understanding of what our processes, our policies, and our practices are, because I do think this is going to, we do it this way, coming through as an emergent motion to council to deal with it. We see the harm that is going on in the community to the parties involved, and I do think we can do a better job at that. So I'm very happy to second the amendment.
Thank you. And for those colleagues using East Scribe, it should be available there, too. For those colleagues in the room, it's also up on the screen. I have Counselor Lewis and then Counselor Pelosi.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Chair. I'm not sure where I'm going to be on the amendment, and I'll be honest, I haven't had time to think about this component of it. I agree with Counselor Cassidy that we don't want to continue to do these as one-offs. But as Counselor Pelosi referenced in her remarks, we've already directed staff to look at our street naming policy, and I'm not, and with all due respect to Counselor Cassidy's intent on this, I'm not sure that the Part C has the same qualifiers for an emergent motion that A and B do. There is a clear instance of There is a clear instance of individuals that are identified and suffering harm from the pieces that are identified in Part A and B. And while I don't dispute that there may be other concerns around harm being caused by other names, I think that this would be something that I would be more comfortable supporting if it came through the standing committee and was included as part of the street naming review that is already underway, that Counselor Palozza has brought forward a motion for prior. So, I'm going to listen to the debate on this a little bit. I'm struggling to support this Part C tonight as part of the emergent motion, but I want to express to Counselor Cassidy and to Counselor Hopkins, who seconded it, that I don't for a moment dispute where you want to go with this. I understand where you want to go. I just think that this piece isn't something that necessarily qualifies under the emergent motion piece, but I'm going to listen to the debate on this. And I'll keep an open mind on where this will take us. But right now, I would say I would be more comfortable supporting a motion like this if it came through committee than as attaching it to this emergent motion.
Counselor Palozza.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer. I would raise a concern and a point that Part C before us is asking for a review under our current policies. Our current policies are 20 years at a date. I believe the intention would be to come forward under the emerging policies that will be brought forward with the summer for consultation. So, just a point of clarity on that. My second point would be when this issue came forward, certainly when we entered this street naming policy conversation we had over the last couple of years, and it came through committee and council several times, and it was with a diversity and inclusion equity-type lens, that when this this motion before us tonight and the concern came forward and the media raised it, thank you to the media for being a voice and bringing things to our attention that had not been done prior. That I did have an immediate phone call with the city's manager recognizing when we had those early conversations for street renaming, it was never considered of what would we do and how we vet people coming in in the case before us, even if it was a police check that we make people do. This was a matter for the military and not in our public courts, and it would not have been known. So, certainly, one idea that might come forward in part of this process would be maybe we just stop naming stuff after people, period. But just through you, Mr. Presiding Officer, to the city manager, that at the time when I had my conversations with Ms. Livingston, she did give the the advice that when the street naming policy will come back, that they will be using a gender lens on that as well of what would be considerations for us to do. So, I believe this work might already be underway and directed already as staff was taking a very broad approach, realizing this policy is decades at a date, and it would be comprehensive coming back. So, just one clarity from Ms. Livingston, if this motion might already be encaptured in work that they're working on.
I'll go to Ms. Livingston.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, our intention in undertaking the direction that council has already provided to us in terms of reviewing the policy, consulting with the community, and bringing forward recommendations is to take a very broad approach. This is not just about only a few equity-deserving groups. It is about everyone, and there is significant intersectionality that will need to be addressed. So, our anti-racism, anti-oppression team are deeply engaged in advising on this work as we work to bring it forward, both through the consultation in the coming weeks and bringing recommendations early next year.
Counselor Palozza, you still have time.
Thank you. I hoped that that might be of use for that conversation I had with Ms. Livingston already in the conversation that's before us this evening.
Next, I have Mayor Holder and then Counselor Lehman.
By the tenor of the discussion that we've had tonight, we all know how challenging and difficult this tragedy is. And it is an extremely sad, sad situation. I had the most thoughtful discussion with Carolyn Wilson on Friday to advise her of our intention. I don't want to lose focus on what we're trying to accomplish with regard to this emergent motion. And because of that, I feel less comfortable supporting the Amendment C. And not because it's a bad amendment, but I think it's important that council focus on the issues of this very moment and not at a motion that frankly talks about current policies when... And that would be the basis on which we would determine if any places warrant renaming, when in fact, part of the challenge is may well be those current policies themselves. So, I think there's a challenge with that. We've heard the city manager talk about the comprehensive review that's in place now. And as that comes back to council, I think we do have an opportunity, colleagues, to review that, amend it, tweak it, make sure it's material to our current circumstance. This is so broad a motion, as well-intended as I know it truly is. I know the mover is so well-intended on this. But there's sometimes time and place. And what I'm concerned about is this is today not the time nor the place. I would ask, let us deal with the issue that was in front of us as a result of the original emergent motion, unamended. Deal with that. Let staff do what they need to do to bring back something to us that we can consider. I think we've had good counsel from our city manager with regard to this. And we stay... And I think it's more important always to do this right than to do it quick. And so, it's my hope, colleagues, that we can stay... I'd like to suggest with the deepest of respect that we don't support C and that we move on with A and B as has been put in front of you. Thank you, Chair.
Counselor Cassidy, are you... Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer. Thank you for allowing me this indulgence, clarity. Current policies do prohibit convicted people, people convicted of a crime from having a street named after them. That's where I was going with this, having said that and having heard from my colleagues and knowing that if this is defeated, it will be a decided matter. I will withdraw this amendment, and I intend to bring it to Community and Protective Services Committee, which I believe is the correct committee.
Thank you, Counselor Cassidy. So, the amendment is being withdrawn by the mover. They're... Okay, the secondor concurs. I can go back to the main motion, which has two parts. I had people add their names for the amendment. I'm unsure if you want to speak on the main motion, so I'll just check with Counselor Lehman here. Would you like to speak on the main? No? Okay. So, I'll look for speakers on the main motion. Okay, so, the main motion moved by Mayor Holder, seconded by Counselor Palozza, has two parts. You can see that in eScribe. It's also the exact wording that is included in your agenda. There are no more speakers, so I'll open this for voting.
Closing the vote. Motion carries 14 to 1.
With that, that matter is over, and I will return the chair to the mayor.
Thanks very much, Deputy Mayor. So, this takes us now to bylaws. And we're going to do this in a few sections with your indulgence. We're going to deal with the main body, colleagues, of the bylaws. Then we are going to move to two bylaw items that relate to the conflict as declared by Counselor Salee. And then we are going to deal with two bylaws as it relates to short-term rentals. And then we're going to have an added Bill 257, which deals with an item from closed session with regard to Wellington Street Road. You'll correct me. Thank you. So, with that, colleagues, forgive me as I kind of work through the numbers and the machinations, and the clerk is there to ensure that I get this totally correct, but let's give this a go. I'm going to look for a mover and second for the introduction and first reading of Bills 231 through 256, where we will exclude Bills 232, 233, 239, 243. But we will include revised Bills 240, 254, and 256, which were the Planning Environment Committee bylaws. And am I in a position to add Bill 257? Is that all right, clerk, or do I need to do that separately? Just say I can. Oh, I think he would. So, forgive me. We will not... Out of respect to Counselor Van Mirburgen, we will not do it separately. So, with that, I'll look for a mover, please. I've got Counselor Hamu, seconded by Counselor Fife Miller. We'll call the vote. And if there's any question about what we're voting on, I can read it back to you again. Counselor Van Mirburgen.
Thank you, Mayor. No, I just wanted to confirm that 257 will be called separately.
It will be, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Hamer.
Yeah, I just want to make sure 239 is not included.
Yes, 239 and 243 will... That's the short-term rentals will be dealt with separately, Counselor Hamer. Thank you. So, again, I'm going to say to colleagues, what we are excluding are the short-term rentals, 239, 243. We are excluding Counselor Salee's conflict, conflicts on Bills 232 and Bill 33. We are excluding Bill 257, which deals with the Wellington Gateway. Any other comments or questions? I think we got that right. So, have we voted on this yet, clerk? Why don't we then? Perfect.
Counselor Salee.
I was just confirming that the one by law related to immigration was not included.
That's correct, Counselor.
Great, thank you. I'll vote manually, yay, not a slow thing, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Closing the vote. Motion carries 15 to 0.
Colleagues, I'm going to look for a mover and second of 231 through 256, and I will be excluding Items 239 and 243. I will be excluding 232 and 233. I will add revised Bills 240, 254, and 256. And for fun, I will exclude Bill 257. Do I have a mover for that? It's the same what we just went through a moment ago. Counselor Lehman, seconded by Counselor Hopkins. Thank you. Do we have any comments or questions on those items? I see none. Clerk, we'll call the question.
Closing the vote. Motion carries 15 to 0.
Thank you. And finally, colleagues, I'll for third reading and enactment of Bills 231 through 256. I'll be excluding Bills 232, 233, 239, and 243. I will add revised Bills 240, 254, and 256, which are the PEC revisions. And I will exclude Bill 257. Can I have a mover, please? Counselor Van Mirburgen, seconded by Counselor Hamu. We'll call the vote.
Closing the vote. Motion carries 15 to 0.
Thanks, colleagues. For the introduction and first reading of Bills 232 and 233, specifically those are the bills where Counselor Salee declared a conflict. I'll look for a mover, please. Counselor Palozza, seconded by Counselor Fife Miller. We'll call the vote. And this is the one, Counselor Salee, you get to abstain.
Sorry, if this is the one related to me, it's not letting me abstain for my refusal.
Did you have issues over there? I'll look to the clerk for that. We can, I think, take a verbal?
Yes, we can. That has been done, Your Worship. Closing the vote. Motion carries 14 to 0 with one recuse.
Thanks for a mover and second or sec reading of Bills 232 and 233. Moved by Counselor Hamer. Thank you. Seconded by Counselor Palozza. Thank you. Any comments or discussion? I see none. We'll call the vote.
I'll abstain again. It's not letting me vote. I think I might have to close and reopen.
Thank you. Yeah, don't quite do that yet. We've got one more. We don't want to...
Closing the vote. Motion carries 14 to 0 with one recuse.
So, colleagues, for third 232 and 233, I'll look for a mover and a secondor, please. Moved by Counselor Lewis, seconded by Counselor Hopkins. Thank you very much. We'll call the vote.
Counselor Salee abstaining.
Glad you hung in with us on that. Thank you, Counselor Salee.
Closing the vote. Motion carries 14 to 0 with one recuse.
All right, colleagues, now we're going to deal with 239 and 243. Those are the short-term rental bylaws. So, for introduction and first reading of those two bills, I will look for a mover and a secondor. Moved by Counselor Lewis, seconded by Counselor Hamu. We'll call the question.
Counselor Salee.
Yay.
Thank you.
Closing the vote. Motion carries 12 to 2 with one recuse.
Again, we're rentals. This is second reading of Bills 239, 243. I'll look for a mover and a secondor. Moved by Counselor Van Mirburgen, seconded by Counselor Fife Miller. Any comments, any discussion? Counselor Turner.
I'll give it one more try. The 400 units that may enter back into the housing market account for 0.16% of the housing units within the city of London. It's one time. And the chill that we might be sending towards investors of any kind and small business operators within our cities is going to be rather profound. So, I urge you to consider not supporting this motion. I know we did during the debate, but we get another chance here.
Thank you very much. Any other comments? I see none. We will call the question.
Closing the vote. Motion carries 12 to 2 with one recuse.
Colleagues, for third reading and enactment of Bills 239, 243, I'll require a mover and a secondor, please. Moved by Counselor Lehman, seconded by Counselor Fife Miller. We'll call the question. We'll call the question.
Counsel Sully. Closing the vote, motion carries 13 to 1 with one recuse.
So let's go to 257. This is Bill 257. Counsel Van Mirbergen, this is the item dealt, dealing with the Wellington Gateway item out of closed session. With this, I'll look for a mover and a secondor for introduction, first reading of Bill 257. Counsel Lewis, seconded by Counsel Hopkins, thank you. Let's call the vote.
Closing the vote, motion carries 13 to 1 with one recuse.
For second reading of Bill 257, I will require a mover, please. Moved by Counsel Hamer, seconded by Counsel Hopkins. Thank you very much. Any discussion? I see none, we'll call the question.
Closing the vote, motion carries 13 to 1 with one recuse.
And colleagues, finally, for third reading of 257, I will look for a mover and a secondor. Moved by Counsel Lehman, seconded by Counsel Hamu. We'll call the vote.
Closing the vote, motion carries 13 to 1 with one recuse.
Thanks very much, colleagues. 2007, and by some accounts, that's not the latest, but it's also a long night, and I appreciate all of you doing this. I'd like to say thank you as well, Ms. Livingston, to staff. You know, it's interesting, we do these meetings. I think we have seven or eight of these, seven or eight council meetings left till the end of the term. And I truly sincerely appreciate everyone's resolve in getting us through the business of the city as we've done this. And it's been great. This is, I consider this council the A-team. The work that you do, as well as I consider the work done by our administration the absolute best. You heard comments already tonight about the teamwork, the support we get from staff in so many areas. We deal with tough issues, and we deal with a number of issues that are so substantial and impactful on people's lives, and we take that role very seriously. So Ms. Livingston, to all of our staff. So we can always say great job to our senior leadership team, and, you know, we really, truly, sincerely mean it. But, you know, it's the people also behind the senior leadership team that do that work as well, from our front desks to our people behind every scene and behind every broom and behind every vehicle that truly makes things matter, and we're grateful to all of them. So with that, colleagues, and I look for a motion to adjourn, just because I'd like to. Counsel Van Mirbergen, seconded by Counsel Turner. Let's do a show of hands if you're keen. All those in favor?
Motion carries.
Thanks, all. We'll see you soon.